For members of the public who are watching, if you could just bear with us. We are using some technology to be able to conduct this meeting under expanded orders or opinions from the governor, expanded authorities, to hold this meeting electronically. So if you'll bear with us, as we work with the technology, we really appreciate it. If you're calling in at opportunities for public participation, the mayor will call for that and we will unmute you to allow you to make comments during the meeting. Just please know we'll just have to kind of take turns and we'll walk you through that when the time comes. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor and he can start the meeting.
Okay, now time is four oh three. I'm going to call for the emergency meeting of Town Council of Town of Sunnyvale for Thursday, March 19th. Like I said, the time is four oh three. Councilmember, since I cannot see everybody, I'm going to ask you to say who is there. If you could, say your name. Mr. Finch, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Thank you. Mr. Clark? So we got... If you all could mute your phone, that'd be nice. Mr. Clark, are you on the line? Okay, I'll come back to you. Ms. Egan, are you on the line?
Yes.
Mr. Jonathan, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wade, are you on the line?
I'm on the line.
And I got Mr. Larry Allen here in the chamber with me and this is Mayor George. And Mr. Clark, let me come back to you one more time. Are you on the line, sir?
Hey, this is Kevin. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you. We've got all these seven councilmembers present with seven councilmembers present. We are called. Counselor, again, this is an emergency meeting and I appreciate you calling into this meeting and coming in person. Like Ms. Guthrie explained, we have a... the owner of the state has revoked some of the open meeting requirements and so we are allowed to participate and use maximum precaution in social distancing. Again, this is an attempt to be careful and do what is right. At the same time, the message is simple. We serve the people. We are a government agency. This is the local government. We'll carry out and continue to serve the people no matter what. At the same time, we'll take the precaution but we'll continue and carry out our responsibility as council. With that, council, we have two items on the agenda. Number one, discuss, consider, and act upon extending the order declaring a local disaster for Public Health Emergency that is issued by Mayor George on March 13, 2020. Such order shall be extended until such time that it is tracked by public order or action of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas. I'm going to turn it over to Town Manager, Ms. Guthrie.
Brenda, are you on the line?
Yes.
Do you feel it's necessary for me to read the entire declaration out loud or it's posted on the...
It is not.
Thank you, ma'am. So mayor, as you know, last Friday morning at 6:15 a.m., you came into Town Hall and did sign our initial local disaster declaration. By law, that declaration can stand for seven days and then it needs to... We're going to mute all of the lines just because we're getting a lot of background noise. Okay, all of you are muted. We will call for discussion and unmute.
I'm trying to mute.
Okay, we're trying to mute your phones, but if you could please personally mute your phone, we would appreciate it because we're getting a lot of background noise. Thank you. Okay, and we will unmute you at the time when we allow for discussion. So again, on last Friday morning, the mayor came in at 6:15 and signed his disaster declaration after the county judge issued his on Thursday night. Kevin, can you please mute your phone if possible? I think you're the only one we are able to not... not able to mute. Okay, we'll move forward. So we issued a disaster declaration on Friday morning at 6:15. By law, that declaration can stand for seven days, but then to renew that, it needs to be voted on by the city council or the town council. We did ours following the county judge issuing his disaster declaration. At the time, we also issued orders that were similar in scope to the county judges. Today, we are not going to do that. We're just going to renew our disaster declaration and then we are going to... and I wrote in there that any orders that are from his office also obviously extend to the Town of Sunnyvale. We know that that's... we didn't need to put that in here. I just did it to acknowledge that there are orders out there that pertain to us. Today, we also got executive orders from the governor's office that are actually similar in scope to where the county judge put in place. So we've got it at several levels of government now. So with that, I would just ask for you to consider extending this disaster declaration. I did want to add that I've had a lot of people ask me, do we really need to do that if there's one at the county and the state level? I did confer with our attorney this afternoon and there was also some advice that came out of the Texas Municipal League and the consistent consensus is that yes, it does protect us and make sure that we're going to be able to receive any help for either the organization or our citizens or businesses if we are fully covered as well. So it is our recommendation that we adopt this today.
And the requirement doesn't change, but because we are in the county, but there could be additional protections as you stated, the town also passes.
That's our belief and so we, you know, in an abundance of caution, we recommend that we do go ahead and pass one for ourselves as well. Okay, so you probably need to call for discussion and we'll unmute them.
Yeah, if you could just... I'm going to mute that. Counselor, let me tell you something, public comments first, then I'll come back to you for your comments. If there are anyone from the audience who like to comment on this topic, can you please state your name first, then I'll call you for your address, then we'll go one at a time. Are there anyone from the audience or from the members of the public who would like to comment? Now is coming, so I'm going to close the public comments. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the... I'm going to turn it over to the counsel. Let me start with the top of the council. Let me ask Mr. Allen, do you have any comments, sir?
Not just now.
Mr. Finch, do you have any comments, sir?
No comments.
Mr. Clark? Ms. Egan?
No comment.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wade? So what I heard is there are no discussions at this time. If there are none, I can call for a motion with respect to item number one.
Mayor Allen, we approve item one as presented.
Motion made by Councilmember Egan to approve... The name? Item one as presented. And I think I heard Mr. Finch seconded the motion. Did I get that right, Mr. Finch?
Yes.
Okay. So motion made by Ms. Egan, seconded by Mr. Finch to approve item one as presented. Have anyone heard the motion? Are there any discussions? If there is none, I'm going to ask, all in favor of the motion signify. I'm going to again call out the names only because I cannot see you raising your hand. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Finch? Mr. Clark? Ms. Egan? Mr. Freeman? Mr. Wade? Mr. Wade, do you have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And Mayor George, he's supporting it. So with all seven supporting it, motion one is passed. Moving on to item two, discuss, consider, and act upon Resolution 20-23, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, modifying the Town Personnel Policies by amending Resolution 16-49, providing a severity clause, providing a failure clause, and providing an effective date. Ms. Guthrie?
Thank you, sir. So as this situation has unfolded, we did a review of our personnel policies and we found that there was nothing in our policies that addressed having to declare closures or, you know, changing in the scheduling of our workforce. And so we just wanted to amend that policy to make sure that that authority was granted. So if you'll notice that on page 32 of the policies, a paragraph has been added and it says, "In the event of an emergency, Town Council delegates authority to the mayor, the town manager, or the town managers designated to declare closure of operations under essential personnel or skeleton crew at all town facilities." So we just wanted to add that so that should we need to do such action, you know, on the advice of our emergency management team that we meet with at noon every single day, then we would have the authority to do that without convening a forum of the council. And there is an attached resolution to make such change, Resolution 20-23.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. So I'm going to, at this time, again, like last time, I'm going to take public comments first. After that, I will go for council discussions. At this time, if there are anyone from the members of the audience who are listening in who would like to comment on item number two, would you please state your name first and I will call you one at a time. Are there any members of the audience who would like to comment on item number two? If there are no public comments, I'm going to close the public comments section. I'm going to move on to council discussions. With that, I'm going to call one council member at a time. If you have any comments or discussion, then we're telling. Then I started with Mr. Allen. He's in the council. Minister Allen, any comments?
There is, ma'am. I understand the essence of what we're trying to accomplish. My question is, this is open-ended to any of possibly three people can make a decision. Protocol would seem to imagine it should be A, B, C. It looks like any of the three could do it and that would potentially a designated could usurp the mayor. I'm not sure I like the way that we have that designated in that order. I think we should protocol.
For creation.
A, B, C, so that we have clarity on that.
So we would change it. In the event of an emergency, Town Council delegates the authority to the mayor first, town manager second, or town manager designated third. And the only reason we added that was in the event that I was ill and couldn't be here, that there was another staff member that could act in that authority. So in that situation, I would have delegated my authorities or you all would have delegated them for me, so.
But the way I can see that going bad is that your designated decides now they're going to make the decision and you serve the mayor. So I think we should have that.
Good point.
Do you like the change that I suggested?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Any other comments, Mr. Allen?
I'm good.
Mr. Finch?
No comment, there.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
No comments.
Ms. Egan?
The only thought is, same way that we just had in the previous motion, that there was a limitation in time to the original emergency order that was written, that there was a timeframe of seven days of others to decorate before that had to go to the full council. And I hate to think, I always try to look at all sides of the issue and I would hate to think that somebody would go rogue and all of a sudden say, we're going to shut this down for five weeks without the rest of the council having an opportunity to speak up with that. I don't see limitation in what is written and should we not, just as it was with previous motion and/or the previous order that was signed, that a limitation to the amount of time that action can happen before it goes before at least a forum of council?
Go ahead, Ms. Guthrie. I was going to ask Brenda. Emergency is something is just deemed... how do you define it for emergency, Brenda? Is it a declaration goes with it or not necessarily? Brenda, did you hear my question, ma'am?
So we could write, until she chimes in, we could put extended closures in an emergency, in an ongoing emergency must be brought before council within seven days of action? Are you comfortable with that, Councilmember Egan?
I'm not cool with that because it parallels the previous process and that's definitely acceptable, quite obviously.
Okay, so I put extended closures must be brought before a quorum of the council for action within seven days?
Yes.
So what is the starting point?
Within seven days of the action?
Now, the starting point is whenever the call is made.
I think there's a couple of considerations. One is impossible because we declared emergency. But if we can declare emergency before this goes protocol 123, the mayor would... mayor should consult with the council. So now the council has the ability to put in there. Procedurally, the mayor makes the decision, if not him, designated or town manager or designated, and then it could be within seven days. So it's kind of a procedural protocol that we should have.
So you want a mayor or designated, you want a fourth motion there?
Well, the mayor pro tem would act in your place.
Correct.
So we already had that built in. Let's decide how this usurps that.
Is that the end of what's...
Yeah, I mean, that's what my mind would be is the mayor, I'll put mayor or designated. I mean, I think we're trying to get is if we're in a true emergency and I'm getting direction from the, you know, the county judge that we need to send everybody home, that I have the authority to send everybody home. So, I mean, I don't really see this happening without an order from some other entity unless, you know, let me just like paint the picture, like if all of a sudden I have several employees who are leaving sick that are symptomatic, I would call you and say, I really feel that we need to shut down the facility and send everybody home. But if I can't reach you, I need to take that action. You know, I can check with the marriage pro tem, but I, you know, and maybe that's a dramatic scenario, but I would like to have the authority to send them home. And I'm always accountable back to you guys for any actions that I take, so.
Well, I think to Susan, the mayor's point, I think that since you get locked into emergency, we really lock that emergency for personal staffing, right? That's what this is, is staffing.
Yes, it says operations for closure of operations under essential... yes, ma'am. Did you hear?
So let me just chime in one second. As a home role city, you as the city manager have the authority and the only authority with regard to the administration of the city. So unless, if your council is unhappy with what you do, they would have to... they'll just have to close the meeting 72 hours in advance and take action. But I'm concerned about the notion that the mayor is the first in line to handle these issues because under the Home Rule Charter, that should be your responsibility.
Are you comfortable with that, ma'am?
I think so. Yeah.
And I think the point is, is that I'm accountable to you and the council regardless. So if you don't like the action I take, then you have that option to...
Susan, the...
Yes, sir.
The question that I have is, is this only going to be if an emergency is declared or could we be outside of an declared emergency and something just happened and do we have to wait for the declaration first?
Well, I would not think so.
You could be... you could be out... there are emergency situations, say a gas line break or, you know, there's a poisoning or something. Susan has the ability at a moment to take action.
We're talking about two different scenarios, though. There's the... Susan's talking about the scenario where it needs to close Town Hall. Brenda's talking about the scenario where there's an impact to public safety. And I'm implying, I'm implying to say that Susan has the authority to close Town Hall and send employees home right now, today without doing this. If it impacts public safety that's broader than the employees underneath rough in Town Hall, I think that it needs to go through a procedural thing very similar to what she's got set up and what we're being asked to do. That's my perspective.
Well, but really what you're taking action on is restricting movements of the public, not dealing specifically with Town Hall facility. That's something that Susan has the authority to do and should have the authority to do. There are always checks and balances, but I think to be able to be nimble, say for example, when all of this broke loose and we maybe found ourselves behind a curtain, Susan would have the ability, maybe last Thursday, to send everyone home and close the library or close another public facility. And that's always something to figure or even approval. You would just have to do that at a meeting. If it's not an emergency, you'd have to touch the study hour in advance. If it is an emergency under the open meeting act, then you could be in two hours.
Mayor, I want to rescind my comments. I was wrapped around the axle of the town emergency versus just personnel. I think what you have written here based on this and in conjunction with what Brenda said is sufficient.
So you're agreeing with what I've written here?
I'm okay with what's written there. This only applies to staffing. In my original comments, I was thinking, as I was reading this, we were looking at more than staffing. So I rescind my comments. We're talking about staffing only and I agree that what Brenda said is the way it ought to be. Susan or the town manager ought to make that decision first step.
And I don't have a problem. Very much think you're right. Except for that's not the way the state agrees. It doesn't comport staffing and/or for the public in general. And I think we're all trying to...
Just...
I think you're probably correct.
So it says closure of operations under essential personnel or skeleton crew. So Ms. Egan, don't let me speak for you, but you said after listening to Brenda, are you saying that you're good with what is stated here or you want to make changes?
I just think that whatever's done, there ought to be a time step, like there before the full council acts on it if it has to do with public safety, with the health and safety of the public in general. What happens underneath rough Town Hall, she's got to do as she sees good.
Right. I think the way that this is written is confused because Susan's old risk has authority. If you want to change this to delegate authority with regard to, you know, affecting the public, then I think the way that it's written is appropriate.
So Brenda, so what are you saying? Help me understand your recommendation here.
What I'm saying is that writing down the item before you applies only to city staff and essential personnel.
Correct.
And to the extent that that's all that applies, Susan has that authority today and the council doesn't really have the ability under the charter to interfere in that activity. To the extent that you're talking about restricting public to public, then I think it's properly written.
So right now, I'm...
But it would need to be clarified to apply to the public.
So Brenda, would your recommendation be that we just remove the item from the agenda and leave it not stated in the policy manual because it's already inherently part of the charter and...
Yes, I think it leads to confusion about the power of the city manager under a Home Rule Charter.
So the legal...
That's why I agree.
Okay, so the legal plan for planning is to remove this item from the agenda. So let me go back. Mr. Allen, you're good with it?
I'm... I can cover that.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Egan? Ms. Egan, you're good with this while removing the item. I'm taking that as a yes.
All right, I need... That's a yes, Egan.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Finch? Mr. Freeman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wade? Mr. Wade? Mr. Wade, you may all try, turn off your computer mic and just... and try just the phone.
I don't have a computer mic.
Okay, my bad. Okay, so you're good with this removal?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, sir. So Susan, do you want to motion for that or we just remove the item?
I think we can just...
No, you'll just take no action.
Okay, so item number two, no action will be taken. With that, I'm going to call now that is, I'm going to call a motion to adjourn the emergency meeting for Thursday, March 19th. Can I move? Mr. Clark?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Wade and seconded by Mr. Clark to adjourn the emergency meeting for Thursday, March 19th. Have you all heard the motion? I'm going to ask for your vote. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Finch?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
And Mayor George. So now time is four oh three. So now time is four oh three. So I'm going to adjourn the emergency meeting for today. Counsel and staff, I really appreciate and Brenda also for coming together for this meeting and Joseph. Yes, thanks for helping us with considering the technology. There's more things, but so Monday will be silent.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.